I would like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Ali, a letter reflected six o'clock is the agenda of the regular meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It's Wednesday, April the 8th, 2015, and it is six o'clock. We'll go to General A. Call to order, Mr. Jones, can you lead us in an invocation? And Mr. Ramirez, can you lead us?
Thank you, Father, for this day. Bless residents and employees of this city, and continue to guide us in the direction for the best interest of the residents of Rio Grande City. In all that I ask, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible) Texas flag, a flag allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll go to calling of a, calling of a quorum, Ms. Ali.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas. Is absent Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. We'll move on to reading of a proclamation declaring April 2015 as Alcohol Awareness Month. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation Alcohol Awareness Month 2015, whereas alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States, whereas one in every 12 adults, 17.6 million people, suffers from alcohol abuse or dependency, whereas alcohol is a factor in the four leading causes of death among persons ages 10 through 21, and 100,000 people die each year from alcohol-related causes, motor cycle crashes, unintentional injuries, homicide, and suicide, whereas approximately 7.2 million under-8 youth, 12 through 20, 19% were binge drinkers, binge drinking is defined as five or more drinks on the same occasion at least one day in the 30-day prior to survey, whereas 22.6 million people, 9.2% of U.S. population ages 12 and older have an alcohol or drug problem, whereas 2.4 million adolescents have an alcohol or drug problem, whereas young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age 21, whereas approximately 1 in 4 children under 18 live in a family with an alcoholism, and many more live in a family with drug addiction, whereas alcoholism is third-leading lifestyle-related cause of death in the nation. Therefore, I, Renan Garza III, Mayor of Rio Grande City, do hereby proclaim that April 2015 is Alcohol Awareness Month. I also call upon all citizens, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and support efforts that will encourage alcohol prevention and recovery throughout our community. This year's theme for the health of it, early education on alcoholism and addiction, the month of April 2015 will be aimed at educating people about treatment and prevention of alcoholism, particularly among our youth, and the benefits of providing early education to give kids a better understanding of the impact that alcohol can have on their lives. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed on this, the first day of April 20...
Fifteen.
Anybody here to comment on the event of...
I don't understand what's supposed to be here. I don't know.
Very well, and then we'll move on to 1E, and it reads, reading a proclamation designating April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. And it reads, Title VII of Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States of America, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national policy but a fundamental human concept that entitle entitlement for all Americans, and whereas the 46th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help of cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, I, Renan Garza III, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Rio Grande City, Texas, and do hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware and whereof and support the fair housing law. With my hand and the seal of the city of Rio Grande City, Texas, on this, the eighth day of April 2015. Well, anybody to speak on fair housing?
Consider it's a requirement of all cities and counties if they are receiving community development funds from the federal government.
Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. You all want to take one at a time? We'll go to A, approval of departmental travel requests. Ms. Reyes?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, you have under item 2A, we have one employee attending the Texas Criminal Justice Informations Use Crew. This is a dispatching claim, quite necessary and necessary for their licensing and dispatching.
I'll move, Mayor.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez and a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to 2B, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Ms. Reyes.
Yes, sir. You have the minutes for the meeting of March 18th in your package. If you are in agreement and there are no corrections, they are ready to be approved, sir.
I'll move. I have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to item 2C, approval of EDC action from meetings of April 8th, 2015.
Mayor and Commissioners, the Economic Development Corporation just had their meeting, and you have there the agenda. I know most of you were present, all of you were actually present. You are aware of the actions taken, and this is an action item to ratify the actions of the EDC board.
To EDC president, you got anything to add to?
No, sir. I'll move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to item 3, ordinances, and we'll go to 3A.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is the first reading of the ordinance to hold the special elections due to vacancy of the resignation of Ruben Oviedo as the mayor of Rio Grande City. We have had consultation with the Secretary of State's Office, our city attorney, and the consulting attorney also. You have in your packet the calendar and the agreement to have the election held at the same place that the city normally has it, it's Building 1, at this Port Ringo campus. Everything is in order. Jackie, do you want to mention anything?
No, everything is ready. We've had the Secretary of State's Office approve everything, and it's ready for the City Commission approval, and this is the first reading, Mayor.
The schedule for the second reading would be on the 22nd of April, at which time at that six o'clock, any interested candidates would be able to file.
And this item is calling for the election to be held on June the 27th.
Yes, sir.
Trying to find the...
Is this only one week or two weeks?
It would be 10 days.
10 days.
Also included with the ordinance is the contract for services for the county.
That's, the contract for services for the county is attached as Exhibit A, and that's included as part of the ordinance.
I'll move, Mayor. I have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second. We're gonna, for the calendar, if this automatically becomes official, Ms. Ali, the schedule of the...
After the second reading. If we don't have a second reading on the 22nd, the schedule will change dramatically.
Sir, would you like, how do you call out the key dates?
That'll be good.
The second reading of this ordinance calling the election will affect the order of the election, and that will be on April the 22nd. The first day for candidates to file for a place on the ballot would be after the meeting on April the 22nd. The last day for candidates to file would be on May the 13th. We begin early voting on June the 10th. Early voting ends on June 23rd, and the actual election will be on Saturday, June the 27th. For any further information, you can contact my office. We'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Very well. I have a motion by Mr. Jones. Second. I'll go ahead and put it to the board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to Resolutions 4A.
Yes, sir. It was brought to our attention of some services that were not being provided by our solid waste provider.
Let me go ahead and read the agenda.
The item?
It says, discussion and possible action to adopt Resolution 2015-9 regarding notice to allied waste on solid waste agreement. Okay. Ms. Reyes.
We were brought to awareness, you know, there were some services that were not being provided by our local water, solid waste provider, and in our due diligence, we are taking action to remediate this or try to find a consensus to work this out. I know our attorney has drafted a resolution, and she'll be explaining what the resolution will be advising allied waste notice of.
Yes, our contractor for solid waste services, as you all know, is Allied Waste. Pursuant to the contractual agreement we have with them under Section 19, we have to put them on notice per resolution by the City Commission regarding any concerns, deficiencies, or defaults under the contract. As our city manager stated, it's been brought to our attention that there's been some billings within the past couple years for services provided to county buildings, and that were not provided, yet those services were paid for. So this resolution is to put allied waste on notice regarding the monies that are due and payable within 30 days for the services that were not rendered but yet billed for, and secondly, regarding the requirement that they have four citywide cleanups, which they have not performed to date, and third, and finally, issues regarding the brush pickup in our community. So they're being put on notice. This is simply a resolution to put them on notice. Once it is approved today, we'll be sent to them certified mail pursuant to the contract, and hopefully, we'll be able to rectify these situations within 30 days and come back to you all with a response.
Very well.
We do have an official request from the county judge a little bit...
I was gonna ask, we did get a letter from the county judge.
Yes, sir. I will respond tomorrow, saying that we have been taking action, and we should be getting back to him, you know, as soon as we make the arrangements with allied waste.
Very well. It's the pleasure of the board.
I'll move, Mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez.
Second.
A second by Mr. Jones, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll go to Planning, 5A. 5A, in the agree discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for final approval of El Mesquite Commercial Subdivision. Mesquital, I'm sorry.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the final plaque rule. It is one-track commercial subdivision, which is east of Gunsund Limited. They have gone through the process. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this item on March 3rd, 2015. They are, they will be provided with sanitary sewer and water from Rio Grande City.
I'll move, Mayor.
I have a second. Oh, second. I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to City Manager's Report, and we'll go to 6A, or did I miss one?
Yes, sir. 5B.
5B, I'm sorry. 5B, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary approval of the re-subdivision of Alta Vista Commercial Center Phase 4. This is a...
This is a, it was originally subdivided as a commercial tract, three lots, for long 3167. It is coming before the commission for a re-subdivision to make it into a one-track property. This subdivision did not go through the planning zone. There was no farm on Monday evening. These are one lot with water to be served by Rio Water Supply and with the sewer service to be proposed to be served by the city. There are conditions in the planning director's memo, and I know that it has received through a public hearing process also concerning some of the utility requirements to be provided to the subdivision, concerned with the proper water pressure, concerned with the, also providing the sewer service. All of that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time, but it was just a public hearing, sir.
In regards to this item, we do have another item that is related to this in helping with the utilities for this project, which is one of the lift stations.
On 6B, you have on the agenda to authorize the staff to advertise for bids for the Solis Lift Station. This subdivision is proposed to send, get sewer service by going to that lift station. Currently, it does not have the capacity. Back in 2007, a study was made by that current city engineer, Mr. Gilbert Gracia, and the lift station was unable to provide service for not more than, than only the 100 units. It has been in the works. We do have funding. I do strongly suggest, as in my memo for that item, that besides that lift station, we also need to include Los Garcia's Lift Station, because it is downstream. From there, it just will go to another lift station on Bluebonnet, and then move forward through a forest main all the way to the sewer plant. This, all the lift stations, they're being funded to Texas Water Development Board. The delay in going now for bids, the plan was to go out for bids on all four for cost savings. Until the Texas Water Development Board gives you a written authorization to advertise, we cannot move forward. It has to be an official written notice from Texas Water Development Board. City attorney has to sign off on each lift station stating that we are owners of the property, and some of the stations are like 1960s. We've searched on the deeds, and they want to see the documentation. That is, on the Pizolies, we don't have no problem. We do have Eastmans. The Garcia's, it has been going through the Lincoln Tax Attorneys, and their last meeting would be with the South Texas Community College in order for the bid that the city made on the lift station to be approved.
Very well. And as far as the water issue, we're pending...
Rio Water Supply, although they did construct a 2 million gallons per day water treatment plant, they do need their second phase, which is the tanks to provide the necessary water pressure. I'm aware that some readings were taken. I don't know the exact locations, and I am not aware at what peak times they were taken, but they have not provided the documentation. I think that's something that the planning and zoning was waiting for. We do have a planning and zoning chair here, who's gone through this process over the past two, three meetings maybe, and we do have the engineer for the subdivision available for questions.
This is preliminary, and we can do this subject to the issue with the water and with the sewer.
This is a preliminary, yes, sir. The preliminary would start the subdivision process before the plaque comes back for final, we would need to have all the agreements, any documentation to the testing in order to file the subdivision plaque. Once a plaque is filed, recorded at the county clerk's, then permit issues can be provided. I understand it is quite a large investment. I know the owners are here. The, being the type of construction, it will require certain fire protection codes to be met, and I'm hoping that Rio Water Supply will be able to provide that. We've had some commercial construction that have had to do their, some storage tanks to provide the pressure just for the sprinkler systems, and I'm hoping that they don't come to that point, because it can be expensive.
My, I'm just concerned, you know, with the, with the services, you know, with the water pressure, and honestly, it's in this that we always go to planning and zoning before we take any action on this board. I strongly suggest, you know, that we table this and let planning and zoning, you know, do their preliminary work, because we have no paperwork in front of us, you know, and I was especially, you know, worried about the peak and the pressure, the water pressure, because we might be saying here and that, there and that, but as long as I don't see any documentations in front of me, you know, I'm strongly suggesting that we send it back to planning and zoning and then bring it back on the next meeting.
Well, it's at a dead end right now. It's at an 90th date.
But a table is an action?
A table would be an action item, Mayor, so, if you all chose to table it.
If I may, Mayor, give a check. Mr. Jones, this information was presented to the planning department and the PMV, so if you didn't get it in your packet, that was not an oversight.
No, actually, it is in the packet. It's been provided.
So, there had been pressure tests taken. It was taken on San Goberito Street, which is further up the line in what it means if the damage didn't happen. What you have before you is NACSA site plan approval, which the city will have a chance to review when we get it finalized and brought in. What you have before you is a re-subdivision of the commercial property that has water service and sewer service to it. It was plotted. So, as far as for the re-subdivision, that's not really an issue. Once the site development comes in, then that's when all the calculations, everything comes into question. But up to now, we've been able to provide the pressure that the water supply pressure is providing. These are numbers that we're generating. We've asked them to verify that they can supply it, and you have the list before you. So, I don't understand what the question is.
The action's gonna be to just to approve the re-subdivision of this property, correct?
Basically, taking three commercial lots and plating it into one.
Yeah, the actual building of the property that, that comes back to the table, correct? Once everything has been met as far as the water pressure, the sanitary, the sewer, and all that, correct?
You have site plan approval.
Yeah.
So without those sources being, or there need to be, then obviously, it doesn't go through. Obviously, we can not act on it, because there's gonna be no sufficient pressure or sewer services to that property to be able to sustain that.
At what time, at what time were they taken?
Well, I don't know what time, sir, but there's a whole list of dates, I guess.
I would strongly suggest, you know, that we get the times on here.
The water supplies are...
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, you know. Water pressures can be taken in the morning, and they can be taken in the afternoon, you're gonna get different TSI's.
Who...
I'm not an expert on this, but all.
The city won't be supplying the water. The water supply corporation signs off on the letter. Or is that the city's...
I'm just worried about the water pressure. Other than me stopping this development, that's something that I don't want to do, sir. I want to make that real, real clear. I'm just worried about somebody turning on their faucet and there's no water coming out. That's what I'm worried about.
And that's why the water supply has to sign off on the letter.
This is preliminary, it's fine, you know, but I just want to put the developers on notice, you know, that...
I think that, that we should pass this item on, with a subject to those two concerns, and I think, Mrs. Reyes, that we need to sit down with Rio Water Supply and find out what their future plans are for distribution on that side of Rio Grande, because it's gonna hinder development in the future, and we need to, we need to find out where they're going with this issue.
Might I suggest, Mayor, I agree totally. We are basically served by four different rural water supply co-ops surrounding the city limits. It does put us on a bind for development and future growth. We have similar situations with the other suppliers. It does not help anyone that's trying to develop their property. Might I suggest that the conditions that we take new readings at different peak times to bring back before the final plaque, and also ask the future plans of the Rio Water Supply for this. We will, I have talked on the other issue with the engineer to move forward separately on the Pizolies and on the Los Garcia's, to expedite Los Garcia's. We'll be talking to the Lincoln Tax Attorneys tomorrow to make sure that, you know, everything is fast approaching on the agenda with STC, and get that approval so we can bid it out. It is expensive. Each lift station's about 300 and some thousand when you finish with all the professional services, testing, and construction. It's an investment, fine investment that the city's doing, but it's all to support, you know, development.
Very well. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to build a 2.0 MGD plant and not have a plant for distribution.
They are still working, and I'm aware that they're still working on Eastmans to provide distribution.
And Mayor, if the commission chooses, I'd recommend, if you all choose to table the item with the contingent requirements that you all want, specific times for the PSI readings, and a response from Rio Water Supply Corporation regarding if they're going to be...
Well, I...
If you choose to table it.
I'd like to move forward with preliminary.
Was there a motion?
No, there's been no motion. Oh, was there a motion? Did you make a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
So they recommend, if you move forward with the table, chapter 212, specify specifically 30 days for action, we're over, and I will put on record that you will be receiving the letter requesting a tutorial approval of the subdivision.
We also have an ordinance on our subdivision regs. It was amended recently with the 90 days.
We checked, and I believe you can supersede extension with the ordinance. That would be...
Without some, I'm checking. That's correct. We can, we can take care of that. It's up to the commission, whatever you choose to do.
Does the board want to...
Well, like I mentioned earlier, I think this is preliminary, you know. I mean, the item is here to discuss and request permission to re-subdivide this property. So I think that, you know, whenever they do get ready to build that, you know, apartments or facilities, then it comes back to a table because if obviously the infrastructure's not in place, then obviously they can't build. And there should be different people that need to get signed off or approved before we proceed. So I don't have a problem, you know, moving forward to approve the preliminary subject to obviously meeting all the infrastructure...
As long as they have the PSI's reading, and my specific times are between 4 and 8, you know. And, you know, I have no problem stopping developing in Rio Grande City. Believe me, sir, I have no problems, you know, stopping. But I am very concerned about, you know, just providing the services. Even though if it's not coming from Rio Grande, but anybody wanting to build, you know, they have to provide the services.
I have to ask that you get the phone calls.
Yeah.
But from our side, we asked the water supply to certify whether they could or couldn't. And they're saying they can. And we have to, we have to, the board may never tell us if the system can provide the deeds just like they do with the after seeing you provide them.
So long as the developers know what they're coming before this board for, you know, as long as they understand where we're coming from. You know, I have no problem with that, but they're being put on notice.
Let's ask one more question. There's a memo here from Fulcrum Consulting Services, Executive Engineer for Rio Water Supply. I guess they state there that their approval's contingent on the proposed water system improvements meeting the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So I guess if they don't meet these, right, these requirements, then they can't approve the building, correct?
Exactly.
So pretty much their fate is contingent on Rio Water Supply making these improvements to move forward.
Mr. Gaviria, would you mind changing hats and being City Engineer? What you would recommend to the City Commission?
If you all will allow it, I certainly will.
I'm just curious.
Somebody come back and say later that it's good for the conference of interest. If you all will allow it, I will give my opinion.
No, never mind.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
This is only preliminary.
I'll make the motion with subject of them meeting in our requirements, approvals.
Can the motion be more specific?
So long as we meet the requirements, I have no problem with it. And I'll make a motion on that.
Can you make the motion specific regarding what the requirements are?
Yeah, specifically with mine, you know, with the motions on the, with the PSI.
How would the agenda item need to read, Ms. Holly?
I would say the motion would be to approve for preliminary subject to the new readings of pressure at peak times between 4 and 8 p.m. and the assurances of Rio Water Supply of their ability to provide services.
That'll be my motion.
I second the motion.
Very well. I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Very well. We want to, now we move on to sign that...
6A?
We'll go to 6A. And it reads, "Discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of Mayor Ruben O. Villarreal." Mrs. Vera.
Yes, sir. Friday, March 27th or 45th, Mayor Ruben Villarreal came by the office to deliver his handwritten letter. He said he had been, made it handwritten because that's who he was, simple man. I do want to say that, you know, in the mayor's time since I've been here, that I've seen him lead the city council in your all's efforts to, to items to take, you know, action on items that have kind of put the foundation on the city. You know, you all took the action with his leadership to do the Adverloran Tax, to go get a bond rating, to go out and get a $20 million water treatment plant, 6 million in bonds, all their street pavings. I wanna say our street paving is better than the state highway, these people. We have beautiful 18-acre park. You can see downtown being, you know, coming alive with the new buildings. So through the mayor's leadership and your all's efforts, you know, it's a lot of accomplishment, I stand with you, sir.
Very well. Let me go ahead and read the letter of resignation. It says, "Rio Grande City residents, commission, staff, and administration. It has been a great honor to have served the community of Rio Grande City. These many years, I am grateful for the support and patience of the residents as our town worked towards improvement and growth. At this point, it is necessary for me to devote my time and energy on future endeavors. For this reason, I am resigning my position as mayor effective 5 p.m. Tuesday, March 31st, 2015. I wish many blessings to all and ask that God's grace forever shine brightly upon Rio Grande City, Texas. Warmest regards, Mayor Ruben O. Villarreal." I'll entertain a motion.
Nice move, Mayor.
Second.
Very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, sign. Motion carried. We'll move on to 6B. And it reads, "Discussion and possible action to authorize staff to solicit bids on the rehabilitation, replacement of the Solis Lift Station." Mrs. Vera.
Yes, sir. This item was right now kind of discussed. And this is the lift station that's next to the storage units along 167 on the west side. Like I mentioned before, this lift station right now currently can only serve 100 units. We do have the funding. The plans are ready. It will be submitted with the site certificate being signed by the city attorney to start the process of authorization by Texas Water Development Board to go out for bids. As for my recommendation there, I would like for you all to consider adding to this motion to also go out for bids for the Los Garcia's because Garcia's is downstream from this. It is a critical lift station. Besides receiving from Pizolis, it also receives from the area of Chaco Blanco, Los Trevinos in the Fairgrounds area. Therefore, we can together forward those two items to the Texas Water Development Board. They'll give us a letter authorizing us to go out for bids, preliminary.
Very well. So the change is to include the lift station at Los Garcia's?
Yes, sir.
We got that, Ms. Holly?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Nice move.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramiro.
I second.
I have a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We'll go to 6C. And it reads, "Discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus." Mrs. Vera.
We have been going through all our departments and looking at surplus equipment trying to bring in some additional revenue and make space. You have there on the list of items that need to be auctioned. We have a 2005 Ford and we're also looking at the original trolley Bessie II. There's been a lot of interest from individuals wanting to restore it. They have the means and they are willing to comply with maintaining the main Bessie II. I think it's, right now, it's, we don't have right now any plans for it. But I think it's ready to start being put to use.
A lot of people are asking when we're gonna put it up for auction. I think different people have different ideas for it. It'd be best if it got put to good use. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Nice move.
Second.
Motion, I have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to... Mrs. Lynn, do we have anything in executive?
We have nothing for executive today.
Then I'll entertain a motion to the chair.
Chair, nice move, Mayor.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Mrs. Holly, this meeting is over and it is 6:41. Thank you.